Let's just.
All right, the meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Daniel Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, for both the public hearing cases tonight, I have in the past done consulting services for ACDA and recently was reached out to to provide some conditions assessment for the JCPenney Building for ACDA.
And just to clarify, though, you were not however involved in this project?
Yeah, no involvement in this project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosure.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
And I also have no disclosures. Moving on to our agenda, we have two related matters on our public hearings today. Is there a motion to combine these matters?
I'd like to move to combine matters G1 and G2, 2020-0038 and S12576 because they're relevant.
Thank you. Is there a seconded by Commissioner Krishna? Any opposed? Seeing no opposition in chat and hearing no opposition on testimony, that matter is approved. Before we get into that item, I would like to mention our public testimony procedures. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes.
I'm going to be on the phone for a long time. I know, but I would like to start dinner. I'm going to be on. Okay, this is going to be at least.
I'm not sure who is making noise on the record, but if you would like to speak, please type into chat. Otherwise, if you could mute your side of the phone. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except the commission's recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we have a report?
Thank you, Chair. This is a conditional use for marquee, bus terminal, and a parking garage in B2B zoning district in downtown. The planning department has found that all the approval criteria is met with the conditions of approval stated on pages nine and 10 of your packet. The department finds that the Anchorage 2020 policies seven, nine, 10, so seven is a general land use policy, residential policy number nine, residential policies 10, and 10, commercial policies 18, 20, 21, 23, and transportation policy 34 are all met. The department's recommending approval subject to conditions of approval 1 through 10. Conditions 1 and 2 are standard conditions of approval. Condition of approval 3 on page 9 of your packet resolving with planning the need to record the final plat for the case that has to do with the next case that's related. We just didn't want the conditional use to be approved without the plat, you know, the vacation being recorded. Condition of approval 4, traffic engineering asked for some more ADA parking spaces to be made available. Number 5, Public Transportation Department wanted to take a closer look at street trees and where their buses queue. Condition of approval 6, the street trees need encroachment permits from the Right-of-Way Division. Condition 7 is to conduct a pedestrian level wind assessment. 8 is to obtain a variance for the marquee's distance from the center line of Sixth Avenue. 9 is resolving with municipal curator of public art for the 1% of art. And 10 is to change a label on one of the drawings to match the plat. So those are the conditions of approval recommended by the department for the conditional use permit. And then I'll turn to the plat. So the preliminary plat shows the vacation of six and a half feet of West Sixth Avenue and the dedication of a matching public use easement. The vacation is supported by the Traffic Engineering Department, the Municipal Traffic Engineering Department, Right-of-Way Division, Private Development Division, and the State of Alaska Department of Transportation Public Facilities. So the department's recommending approval of the vacation on page 5 of the preliminary plat packet and approval of the plat for 36 months, subject to conditions 1 through 4 on page 5 of your packet. And these are standard conditions of approval, plat notes and driveway permits. And that's my presentation. I'd be happy to take questions, and I know that the applicant is online as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I have a question on the second case with respect to the plat, and that is that are there any specific approval criteria that apply here? I didn't see anything in the packet or really in the code that seemed to apply, other than, well, I guess, I'm not sure what. What are the criteria we should be looking at for this one?
Laurie, could you turn the volume up just a tad? Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Gardner, could you? I was listening closely, but I had trouble hearing. I don't know what the question was.
Oh, yeah, no problem. My question was just whether there are any specific approval criteria with respect to the second case that we should be looking at and trying to apply here?
Oh, yes, thank you. So with the preliminary plat, so it's a request to re-subdivide and vacate a portion of public right-of-way. And, you know, plating is pretty prescriptive. The only, you know, discretionary part of the review is whether or not to approve the vacation. And the approval criteria is the municipal vacation, let's see, on page 4 of your packet in italics, 2103230, vacation of public and private interest in land. Let's see. The burden of proof shall lie on the petitioner. Let's see. Yeah. I'm flipping to chapter 3. Actually, it's old code, so, well, no, it's new code in this case. Okay. Chapter 3, vacations. Can you come back to me? I'm looking at page 95, chapter 3, page 95, the vacation of public lands and interest in lands. And I'm seeing the authorities, submittal, decision-making responsibilities, that's who gets to decide, the action, approval period, appeals titled to be vacated, and...
Well, Francis, I'm happy to wait to see. I didn't see anything specifically myself in there, and I was just wondering if there are any kind of guideposts that we should be looking at with respect to the merits of kind of the vacation request. So if you see anything, feel free to let us, let me know. And my other question related to the same case, and there was a comment from AWU about requiring a 30-foot right-of-way or easement centered over each main, and then also a comment from Right-of-Way Enforcement about a condition of approval to obtain an encroachment permit. And I saw a condition for the encroachment permit in the other case. And so one question is if that's the condition that they're looking for there. And then with respect to AWU, do you see any need to have a condition with respect to that 30-foot right-of-way they're mentioning?
So the municipal vacation policy, and I usually print out a copy and add it to the packet, says that the policy is that the public right-of-way isn't needed now or in the future by the public. And the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove that that's the case. The, all utility easements are covered by the condition of approval. The first one, B1, resolved utility easements, so any electric or telecom or gas, sewer, water easements, and those AWU easements that you referred to will all be, any easements that need to be relocated or dedicated will be handled through that condition of approval, number one. What physically happens is that the surveyor has to take the final plat to every utility and get their sign off, and then bring that in to the planning department before the plat can be recorded to verify that the easements, all the needed easements are there. And I didn't hear probably the last word that you asked me. I don't know if there was another question in there?
It related to the Right-of-Way Enforcement comments on page 3 that asked for a condition of approval about obtaining an encroachment permit. And I saw a condition in the first case, condition number 6, which looks to capture what they're requesting there, and I just wanted to confirm that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, the condition of approval to obtain an encroachment permit does not need to be on both the plat and the conditional use. It's more appropriately on the conditional use permit. And it's...
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, on the first case, the conditional use, just one question, if Section 2113, considering non-conformities and moving towards conformance, applies to this project at all?
It is not applicable because bringing characteristics of use into conformance did not exist in the old code, which this application is processed under. But I hadn't, that was a really astute question. Thank you.
And then on the second case, on the plating case, in general, is the swapping out of right-of-way for a public use easement, is that primarily because DOT wouldn't allow a projection into the airspace?
That's exactly right.
Okay. And then on the same comment as Commissioner Gardner regarding AWU's right-of-way, it wasn't clear to me if AWU was talking about their sewer and water mains in Sixth Avenue in meetings, 30 feet of right-of-way, or if it was like an on-property sewer and water line that could be, the one that could be converted to a service. I didn't see a map showing what it was or what they were referring to.
Going from memory, I think the alley is only telecom easement, maybe gas, but I don't think there's any water or sewer in there. Let's see.
If they were referring to water and sewer mains in Sixth Avenue and taking six and a half feet of right-of-way would encroach into their 30-foot requirement each side of the mains, I'd like to assume that that's not what they were talking about, because that might be like a showstopper for it, but it wasn't really clear.
So it's, this is a very typical situation where if a water main is in public right-of-way and it needs to be protected by either right-of-way or an easement, and the location, the exact location of the line is not available right now, but through the surveying and the final plat, they'll ensure that if 30 feet of right-of-way isn't there either side protecting it, then they'll add additional easement. So it just, I think it takes to locate, and then they know whether or not to dedicate additional easement. But that's not going to conflict with this project or the building.
Okay. And then if that's the case, then they would give up their right-of-way but replace it with an easement, a water and sewer service easement, or water and sewer easement if it was needed?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's clear. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? I see a comment in our chat, but I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that by the petitioner?
Yeah.
And so they'll get a chance to speak at that time. So I just want the petitioner to know that we see their comment and will be calling on them shortly. Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions for staff. Can we hear from the petitioner? Also, I would just like to clarify that since we combined the two items, that the petitioners will receive 20 minutes, representatives of groups will receive 10 minutes, and individuals will receive 6 minutes. All right, thank you. Can we hear from the petitioner?
Thank you. This is, to the Chair, this is Juan Lee with R&amp;M Consultants, and I'm here representing ACDA on the Sixth Avenue Garage redevelopment project for both cases. With me, I have my team. I've got Andrew Halkrow, ACDA Executive Director. I've got Melinda Gant from ACDA. And from REM Architects, I have Larry Cash and Monica Solvin. And with that, I will have Andrew Halkrow provide an overview, and then I can respond to the comment regarding utility easements. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening to the Chair and PMZ committee members. My name is Andrew Halkrow. For the record, I'm the Executive Director of the Anchorage Community Development Authority. The Sixth Avenue project, you know, certainly it's been well-written about the last couple of years. This is a project that we've been involved with for the last five years. It's been a little bit of a stop and start due to the nature of the project. It's fairly ambitious. It's a new type of project. There were a lot of hurdles and issues to overcome, including permitting and those types of functional process-driven steps. We've emerged from that. I think we have a very good product that will add value to downtown. Our goal is, of course, not only just to add value to the new hotel or apartment, whatever the final mix looks like, but also to renovate and revitalize and create a modern transit center, transit office, where, you know, it's clean. We cut down on the public waiting areas to limit some of the safety problems. Just a side note, on that site, when I came into this job in August of 2015, year-end 2015, I believe we had about 562 police calls. Six years ago, five years ago, that building was an absolute mess. It was arguably the biggest health and safety issue downtown. There were three, four months prior to this building, before we came onboard, you could have Googled the transit center, and you would have seen stories on everything from drug dealing and sex trafficking to assault. In the last five years, we have reduced the annual calls to APD from 562 to less than 100 last year. We continue to work on the building. We have really embraced this concept of crime prevention through environmental designs. The building in and of itself, when it was built in 1984, of course, we remember that was a different time. The building actually won awards. It was really built as kind of a community gathering place. Of course, in the last 40 years, society has changed, and gathering places have become problematic, especially in the transit center, where you have a lot of nooks and crannies in hidden, you know, hidden corners that make it difficult to secure and police. So we really feel, and we made this comment five years ago, that the only way to fix that building is really to break it and rebuild it. As I mentioned before, we've had significant success with just shutting down some of the building, limiting access and increasing security, but it has made a significant difference. As a matter of fact, if you drive by the transit center today, that entire west corner of Sixth and E, or Sixth, that would be Sixth and G, is clean. There's nobody hanging out there. It's pleasant. We've done a good job managing the crowd and, of course, implementing new security and public safety rules. So although the building's gotten better, it is definitely in the best interest. It's the highest and best use. If we redevelop this site, it will not only add jobs through the construction, but also jobs once the project is completed. And not to mention, it will give a needed facelift to almost a 40-year-old building that, as I said, for the most part, had become the biggest, single biggest health and safety problem downtown. The project in and of itself, as I said, we've worked with, you know, a couple of developers over the last five years. We think we have really landed on, you know, a good project, and we're hopeful, even though the challenges with the economic climate and the questions about tourism industry and the local economy, we think this project is well-suited to be built, and certainly well-suited to add value to what we feel is absolutely primary or state downtown. So, you know, unless there's any other specific questions, I'd certainly like to turn it over to the rest of my team.
All right, thank you. You have 15 minutes remaining for rebuttal. Commissioner Strike, do you have a question?
Yes, and thank you for the chair. A question, I think, for the petitioner for clarity. There is no currently an active project identified for this site. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. There is an active project. The original developer pulled out of the project in August. We've had a group of local investors and local developers that have stepped in and would like to pick up and continue the project. We were far enough along in the planning and permitting processes that we felt like this project is going to be built, and we would continue on the process to get the necessary permits. So to answer your question, yes, there is an active project. The Board of Directors of ACDA is anticipating getting that proposal within the next 30 days.
Well, a little contradictory there. So you've not signed on to the new developers that have stepped in. They're not signed in. They've shown an interest in the property, but no one has yet stepped up on this project yet?
We do not. The question is, we do not have a current development agreement signed with the new developers. What we do is we have the developers, most of the team that is represented here tonight have been the original architects, engineers, and designers of this project. So once the outside developer lost his outside capital, these folks stepped in to fill the void. So while this is, this will eventually be a different development group, it is essentially the same exact people.
Okay. Understanding that we're the same exact people, that we've got a new development group coming in, what I'm really leaning towards is whether or not we might see changes to what was originally planned with the original developer and with this new development group, based on financials, based on the economy, based on the current marketplace, might we see something different in the ultimate proposal for the development? Could the hotel be smaller? Could it be bigger? Might there be more apartments, more retail space or something? Or are we still, are you limiting this proposal to what is being presented here tonight? Is that what the new development team will be subject to, and they'll have to accept this?
Through the Chair, we do not know. We understand that the building, whether it's a mixture of hotel or apartments, the structure itself, the way the building is built, all of the permitting and engineering we've done will be applicable. The only question is the mix of hotel rooms compared to apartments. And I apologize again, you know, the Board of Directors of the ACDA, we anticipate seeing a proposal from the new development group within 30 days.
So the building, again, to the Chair, a follow-up. The envelope of the building dimensions for the project will not change. Only what is encountered inside the building envelope might change with this development. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is my understanding, and that's what we've been assured by the new development team.
And a question then by and through the staff then, or through the Chair to the staff, is if this were to change, if the footprint and/or the dimension of the building should change, be increased or whatever, would this end up having to come back? Or will this approval here be sufficient for any activity then in development that would take place?
Through the Chair, Mr. Strike, thanks for the question. I'm still having trouble hearing people speaking, but this is conditional use for the marquee, the bus terminal, and the parking garage. And the hotel and apartments are by right permitted development, so I think that there could be a potential change in the specific number of hotel rooms and dwelling units, apartments, that wouldn't require it to come back before the commission.
And so, thank you. And what I'm trying to ascertain and make sure that we can maybe accomplish tonight is to make sure that we have an approval process in place so that we can avoid having to come back, and whether or not the approval that we make tonight might benefit the developer and the city and this team to broaden our approval in a manner that would give them some latitude and flexibility on how they proceed. So if the height were to go up two additional stories because it just makes more economic sense, or gets decreased because of financial backing, et cetera, are there any safeguards that we can assist here so that one approval is enough so that they're not having to come back forth before the city in the body? Or what type of circumstances might require that they have to come back before this body?
Gosh, I hesitate to pose a hypothetical. Certainly, they're sort of locked into the building footprint. If they were to try and go higher, I don't think that's the case. I mean, I spoke with one of the investors earlier today, and he knows this 12 stories. But if hypothetically they tried to go taller, we'd have to look at bonus points again, and also the variance for the bulk of the building. And those both, I think, are approved by the planning director. But yeah, if they were to go taller, they could potentially have to come back before the commission.
Okay, that was a good question, that was a good point regarding the bonus points. So could that be handled administratively? I mean, right now, I believe in reading the proposal before us, is that they have excess bonus points provided here, so they've got some flexibility and latitude. So I'm trying to ensure that the development has some flexibility with this new investor group to, ultimately, I, personally, I want to see a building, I want to see a movement forward on the project and not get stopped and curtailed and beleaguered with, you know, six more months of permitting and review and so forth. What can we do, I'm trying to assist here, to ensure that this doesn't have to come back before us? Because right now, there is no official project. The investors are still weighing their options and they're getting their financing together, apparently, and so forth. So something might, something might give or something might occur here. I'm just trying to help, help them along here that we're only here once.
Yeah.
Or should I be sufficient enough to say we're, we're good along this line? I mean, it's...
Mr. Strike, I, through the chair, Mr. Strike, thank you, yeah. No, I understand your point, I understand. I'm not sure about building height. It, it could potentially have to come back before the commission. They're sort of locked into the rest of the building footprint. You know, they're seeking a vacation, and they're building to that limit on the front of the building. So I think that the applicant should expect that this is what they get in terms of building height and, you know, the other dimensions. Like I said, the mix of, you know, by right, commercial retail and the different, a mix of apartments and hotel rooms, as long as it could meet the parking needs and that. I, I think that there's, there's some flexibility in that. But I think that the applicant, if you were to speak to them again, they've submitted this, this application thinking that this is what they're going with. I don't think that they're seeking to deviate from that.
Well, and the economics out there, I would just point out that the next floor or two more floors to this building will be the cheapest square footage they have in this total building. So finances dictate what can and should and will be built. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Do we have any further questions? Do we have any public testimony over the phone? We do not have any public testimony over the phone, so we have 15 minutes remaining for rebuttal if the petitioner would like to speak further on this item.
Through the chair, this is Juan Lee with R&amp;M Consultants again, and I would just like to add that the application in your packet, page 23, has a section on the existing easement, including the utility easement, which is 20 feet in between the Sixth Avenue Garage, which is the project we're here for tonight, and the Seventh Avenue Garage. So there is an easement, is a, there's a driveway there that connects H Street with G Street, and that's where the utility easement is. And like staff said earlier, we can resolve any, any additional utility easement requirements as part of the final plat for the project with AWW. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we have heard the rebuttal from the petitioner, what is the will of the body? To maybe make this a little bit easier to deal with, what we could do is take a motion on the first case and then discuss that, and then deal with a motion on the second case, if that would make it easier for individuals. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, I will kick this off, that in the, in the matter of case number 2020-0038, the conditional use for marquee, bus terminal, and parking garage, I would move for approval based on the findings of the staff and their recommendations.
And there is a second by Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I'm, I'm good with this. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion at this time? Commissioner Gardner?
I'll speak briefly to the approval criteria, but first, just for clarification, I understood that motion to include the conditions of approval that were in the staff's packet, and I guess just to, to make sure that that is, in fact, what's in the motion.
That was my intent, that is correct.
Okay.
I would just like to clarify that Commissioner Strike did include the staff recommendations.
Okay. I guess I would just say briefly, it looks to me like the approval criteria in 215002O are met. It seems to further the goals and policies of the comprehensive development plan. I think it will be a valuable addition to downtown. It will not have a permanent negative impact, and will maintain pedestrian vehicular traffic circulation and safety, and will maintain both through the construction and afterwards the ability of people mover to have the transit center operating there. I'll also note that we didn't receive any public testimony today, and I think it looks like the downtown community council had expressed written support in advance of the hearing today. And that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'd just add that on the conditions of approval, the standards that weren't met are included as conditions of approval, and those include, those conditions that are already listed, and also wanted to note that there were some variances that have already been applied for and approved for the loading dock and the building bulk that address some of the conditions that aren't met.
Thank you. I will also just add that in regards to pedestrian vehicle traffic circulation and safety, that this is a notable area where there are safety concerns, and that it seems as though part of the plan in addressing this is reducing the footprint of the bus transit center area, which can probably eliminate the need of people kind of just hanging out there, and I see that as being valuable towards creating a more walkable and safe city as Anyone else wishing to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That motion passes. Moving on to the next case, would someone like to make a motion in the matter of case Commissioner Anderson?
In the matter of case S-12576, subdivision of one lot into one different lot with a vacation of six feet of right-of-way replacement with six foot of public use easement, I move to approve.
And just to clarify, is that subject to the conditions on page five of our staff packet?
Yes, that does include the recommendations or the conditions of approval on, on page five.
So moved by Commissioner Anderson, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just briefly, the plat appears to address all of the comments and responses from different municipal agencies and utilities, and per Francis McLaughlin's guidance that approval of classes, pretty straightforward and prescriptive, with the exception of sign-off from the utilities, which will be done by the utilities themselves on final approval.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion at this time? I would just like to add that there was a issue raised about whether or not the encroachment permits would be needed. However, those were fully addressed in the conditions of approval in the earlier case. Any other findings before we call for a vote? All right, call for a vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And that motion passes. I would like to thank staff and the petitioner for their time. Through the chair, do we need to do another motion for the 36-month plat, please? I'm going to double-check with staff, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yep, we need to do one more motion. Commissioner O'Quinn?
In the case of S-12576, I would like to move that the plat be subject to a 36-month approval.
Moved by Commissioner O'Quinn, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner O'Quinn?
I'd just like to adopt the findings of the staff earlier today when they discuss that.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So that motion passes, and I believe that officially concludes these cases on our agenda, and would like to thank our staff here for making sure we get all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted, and thank the rest of the staff and the petitioners for their time. I see that we have a motion to adjourn on the queue, however, before we get to that, I wanted to address one more item. This is Commissioner Anderson's last meeting, and I just want to say that I remember the first time I met Commissioner Anderson, and it was when he was presenting in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and my initial thoughts were, we need to have this individual on the Planning and Zoning Commission. His, and just level of involvement within the Anchorage community, and also it is clear that he cares a lot about the community and wants to see it be a better place, has been very needed, both in the city and on the commission. I would also just like to say that as someone who does not have a development background and isn't in that area, his expertise has been very needed, and it will be sorely missed when he moves on, and so I would just like to thank him for all of his time on the commission. And seeing as how Commissioner Strike revoked his motion, if Commissioner Anderson wants to make a motion to adjourn, I think that's his right here.
Thanks for the nice words, and it's been interesting and enjoyable to be on the commission. And Danielle, you do a great job leading it and keeping everybody on track. I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, so moved by Commissioner Anderson, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn and by Commissioner Strike. And with that, we are officially adjourned. Thank you all for your time.